The difference in the budget, I have a bit of a luxury where I could have her help train personally. All right, it is 7:02 and I'm gonna call to order this special business meeting and workshop with the New Market School Board. And we'll begin this meeting as we do all others with the pledge of allegiance, please join me in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to begin this evening with a workshop and we have Amy Rossi, the SAU District data manager with us. So Amy, please take us through your details and you provided us with a document, I see.
Yes, let me just start it up, so you can see it.
And just to note Superintendent NATO is not gonna be with us tonight, so we miss her but we'll see her the next time. All right, Amy, whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you for having me back. I was here in the spring and gave you a presentation about our data in the district. And I'm gonna bring you through some same things that you've seen with some updates and just see how things are going. Guess I need to stand near this. Okay, you saw this chart last time I was here and you'll notice that there is a change on it. And in kindergarten, first and second grade, we have started our Super Kids program. I know that some folks came and talked to the group about Super Kids being our new program, which gives us some really nice consistency throughout kindergarten, first and second grade. The teachers are working with this program. It's a bit different than what we've had in the past and takes quite a bit of time. And with that, it has a lot of great skills that the kids are learning. And the fact that it is in K one and two, great, gives great support in vertical integration of the knowledge that the kids are getting. And on the data side of it, it has three assessments, major assessments, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, much like the other assessments that we have in the district. And it also has unit assessments. So every time a unit is finished, the teachers give an assessment that ensures that the students have learned the skills that are within that unit. So it really gives a good opportunity to make sure that all the kids are getting the skills and the opportunity to go back and help those kids that may not have those skills. So I talked about the foundation skills last time and what those foundation skills are for reading and math. And I thought I'd give you a bit of a data picture of what that looks like. The top row of this, and I'm giving you a view of fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen and seventeen, eighteen data, just so you can see the consistency or not. And the top row is first sound fluency. And that's the first skill that we expect our students to either have or gain. And that's the first sound of a word, that they can tell somebody what that first sound is. So it's breaking down into individual sounds. Then on the bottom row, starting in the winter, after they have shown that they have the knowledge of the first sound, we go on to correct letter sounds. And what they're able to do at that point to get the scores here is take a word, a word like beach. You can tell it's winter and I want it to be summer and so we're gonna use the word beach. And they have to break it down into the sounds. And the sounds in beach are buh-ee-t. So though there's five letters, there's only three sounds. And so that shows that they can actually break down the individual sounds within a word. So that's the progression of those skills. So that's why we test the individual foundation skills to make sure that they are building upon what they've learned and continue. Similarly, in math, the first thing that, the first skill that they're tested on is oral counting. And oral counting gives us a sense that they understand that there are, what numbers are and that they have a sequential order. But it does not necessarily tell us that they understand how numbers work. Later in the year, you can see that their abilities in the second row is called missing number. And that is a true test of their knowledge of what numbers are about because there's three numbers, one, one of which is missing, it's a blank. And they have to say what that missing number is. So they have to understand that, what the sequential number means and, and what might be missing. And that's a difficult skill for them in kindergarten.
Amy, is the green, the green is where we are?
You know, yeah, thank you.
And then the red is where we want to be?
Yes, thank you. Elizabeth, the, the red is the target. So that's the target that they're expected to reach based on national numbers. The green shows that we're above that target.
And those national numbers come from?
The assessment company using their national.
Their national numbers, okay.
Yes.
And Amy, if I'm reading this correctly with the, our special ed students are not on this graph? There's no black line?
I don't, yeah, it is not broken down. This is just all students.
Okay.
So it's, the green is not just general ed students, it's all students?
It's all students, right. It shows up as general ed because you can break it down into the parts, but this is all students.
And how big is the national comparison? Hundreds of schools or?
Probably more like thousands of schools. So we also talked a bit about the NWEA assessment that we use and that starts in third grade and goes through eighth grade. And I'm showing you here a cohort. And I just wanna explain that the top row, I don't know how well you can see that, it says reading survey. In that year, was the last year that NWEA used that particular assessment because the, the nation had gone to Common Core. And so they adapted their assessment to the Common Core standards so that we would be getting a more realistic appraisal of how our kids were doing based on the national standards being used and, and what we use here in New Market. So you, you probably noticed that the top row has a larger group of proficient students. So the proficient students would be the blue and the green. So the following year, the reason there was a drop is that that's, you know, the first time that the Common Core standards were used and the Common Core standards are, were more rigorous than what they were basing it on before. So if you're looking at the blue and the green together, you can get a good idea of, in this cohort, you know, what grade levels. You can see that if we're starting at this line, dipped a little bit as the skills got harder and then came back up and then dipped a little again.
Is that the fifth and sixth grade dips?
Mm-hmm. And the fifth grade, it's, that's actually a little unusual for the fifth grade to dip. Could just be that year, that group.
And what happened with eighth grade?
That's an excellent question. It's difficult to know that it isn't, without going into more miniscule data. And that's, if that's something you'd like me to look at. Anything that you see here and you decide you'd like to get a closer look at it, please let me know.
Okay.
I mean, I think it might be helpful to, when you look at that dip down, you know, what are the motivating factors for that dip? I think it would be helpful.
Oh, yeah. Is that, but that's what this is for, right? This is what your whole position's for. We're trying to monitor what our kids are learning.
Absolutely.
Right, because this would be the same group of children through those years.
Yes, this is what I wanted to show you to help.
Yeah. No, and I, and I think that's the value of this data. It allows us to quantify things.
Yes.
And then teach and plan and do all those things to the areas of weakness or challenge or enhance the strength, strongest areas based upon the tangible data.
So if we were to look at grade five reading, um, forty-one plus twenty-four are proficient. Is that correct? Forty-one percent, right?
Yeah.
Grade five in reading, you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm just picking one.
And Al, this is the same group of kids year after year after year? It's the s- it's the same group of kids taking the test year after year after year.
With grade, fifth, grade six, grade seven, with grade eight.
Thanks, okay, thanks. Okay.
That's why the year changes.
And how do you, when you look at reading, for example, how do, how do, how do we relate that to this other population across the country? How do I relate those numbers?
I don't have that data with me today and that's something that I could also bring in. If you wanted me to do a more detailed view.
I'm really just trying to, so this, these are our students?
These are our students.
And whether our students are competing well against this broad spectrum of students, thousands of students, if it doesn't show up?
It's something that I can pull up.
But that's what I was looking for, but it's not here. This is simply saying.
Right, it's not here. Yes. I'm just showing you the cohort of, one cohort of students.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, right. And really, it's, though it is valuable and I, I have some data towards the end here that compares us to districts near us and districts like us, which I think is, it's actually more valuable, I think, to have some, kids in the same area and looking at schools in this area, some that are very similar, some that may not be quite as similar. Gives us a nice view as well. So I'll show you that later on.
So your comment, if you were just in simple language, comment on reading of this group that's proceeding through, are you pleased with what you see? Is it going in the right direction?
I, I am definitely pleased that, I mean, if you're adding up some of these numbers, having, you know, seventy percent of our students proficient or higher is strong. We always want it to be stronger.
Right.
And, and that is strong. You have to take into account, you know, some kids don't do that well on testing, some kids rush through the testing, some kids just have difficulty with it. So looking at the numbers that are over seventy percent, I think is.
Kids don't know what these tests mean. That, some of them go in there and draw pictures. You know, that's, that's why these things are so hard. But it does give us an idea of how things are going. Like you said, to have that many above proficient, I mean, there's still a good number of kids that are proficient proficient.
Yes, and one of the things that I think I showed you a bit of last time is one of the reasons that NWEA is a valuable assessment for us is that we can break it down into, to component parts. So I'm giving you the overall number. When we, when I have data meetings with the grade level teams, we get deeper into it. After this score, it breaks down into the component groups within reading, literacy and fiction, nonfiction, vocabulary. So their key ideas, their components with, under that, that we look at those specific components. And the teachers, they, you know, look at their teaching and what their, what seem to be the difficult areas. As well as, this is also the assessment that gives us the learning continuum, which breaks down, breaks it down so that we can see how individual students are doing based on standards. So it really gives us a lot of tools to improve instruction. And that's what these assessments are all about. If we're not going to use them to improve instruction, we shouldn't be using them.
Right.
One last question.
Yes.
In two thousand fourteen, or two, yeah, two thousand fourteen, seventy-five percent or so of, of the grade was proficient. In two thousand eighteen, sixty-five percent of the group was proficient. Does that show a decline in, what does that show? I mean, it looks like it's getting worse.
Well, it.
Is that true or am I missing?
Well, getting worse. It, less students achieved proficiency. You're absolutely right.
And why is that?
That would have, we'd have to look at the very specific data. There's so many different things that could be accounted for. I don't know what the situation was last, last year in math.
And the same thing in math. It looks, it's declining over the years.
Well, I was just gonna say, that's exactly what I was just gonna point out, Al, is that if you look at math and in reading, it was, it was a, a difficult year. Don't, don't know exactly why. There are so many different components. And again, I'd be very happy to break this data down. And when, you know, when you.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't wanna ask you something that isn't helpful, I'm just trying to understand.
No, absolutely. And I, and I think that's great because this is, well, this is my job. But it's also, this is also what I think, that's why we do these assessments. What is it that's causing numbers to drop and, and where? So I would be very happy to bring you through that process at another time.
That would be great.
When you have some time so that you can see what I do, what the teachers and I do. Because, you know, my job is to, we go over it together, we pull up things and then they go further and look at what they're teaching and.
And I'll give you an idea. And this sort of, this is not showing here, looking at the dates when they tested. But when I was teaching sixth grade English, I was getting sixth graders, as we have here, who were rotating between a whole group of teachers when they were in a self-contained classroom in fifth grade. So at the beginning of the sixth grade year, if we had tested them, it would have been a real scramble because they were still learning to manage their classroom for themselves. Because they weren't, they were used to having one adult in charge of all the organization in their life. And in sixth grade, they didn't have that anymore.
But Amy, I will definitely get with you to get on a future agenda to dig more deeply. Because I think it'd be beneficial for all of us.
And this is something that, if you look at the math numbers, and you're gonna see this, this pattern throughout, the, the drop in our math proficiency. And the team leaders that are working with math, the teacher leaders, excuse me, teacher leaders that are working with math are talking about, looking at, again, we don't have a specific program for math and not that we necessarily need one, but we do need to make sure that the progression of our math teaching is going in a logical manner that follows the standards so that we're giving our students the knowledge they need to, to become proficient.
And that, that could be what it is. If, if a concept has not been taught by the testing time in eighth grade, people are not as gonna be, be as proficient as they might be had it been. And maybe we need to modify that.
And I know that's the case, has been the case in fifth grade. Talking with fifth grade teachers and being in the room while they're, the kids are testing and the teachers will say, and they'll point out something that's on the screen and say, we don't teach that. And there's gonna be some of that on any assessment. You're not gonna teach every single thing that, that's there. However, there does seem to be an abundance of that. So we need to catch up with that and make sure that we're covering it.
I'm just wondering, this is a little out of the pool, but I'm wondering, grade eight students, is more things going on in their life and aren't paying as much education?
Like hormones. Like hormones.
I, I think that's, I, I think that can, certainly can be part of it. I also think that sometimes there's a, a group of students that just aren't meshing as well. And we can't always say that it's, you know, I mean, they actually, if you look at eighth grade, they did a little better than, well, I guess they didn't. I was gonna say than sixth grade, but they didn't quite. They're still lower. It is that year right before high school. It is that year right before high school. But I will definitely come back and show you how in-depth we can get with looking at this data. So this again shows you the cohesiveness of that NY. I showed you the NWEA that we go third grade through eighth grade so that we're using the same assessment and it's more valuable for us knowledge-wise. I'm gonna show you a couple of other things, but you'll notice that I have highlighted the PSAT eight, nine and the PSET ten, N, NMSQT. And I have more to tell you about that, okay? It's another place that we've made a change that's gonna be more in sync with the students' education going forward.
And that's a change from the ACT in the past, correct?
Yes. Yes, we did the pre-ACT and the ACT. And now we're going to the SAT. Cause we, we, we give the kids the school day SAT. That's statewide. And so by giving them the PSATs, we're building, much better building block for us, for the students. Oh, I went backwards. Yeah, I went backwards, sorry. So this is the New Hampshire State Assessment. And this, this is a little confusing. I wanted to give you cohorts, but in order to do that, I had to break it down because I only had a certain number of years to deal with. So third through sixth is a cohort, fourth through seventh, that's another cohort. So each block you see up here is a cohort so that we can look at it. And this is the ELI, the English Language Arts.
And level three plus means?
Proficient or above.
Okay, so three is proficient?
Mm-hmm.
And what are, what are the state levels for some of these, Amy, do you have? Like for grade three, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, do we know what the state's proficient, three plus? You probably haven't underfitted.
Let me just see if I have it on.
You probably haven't. I, yeah.
I don't have that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just trying to give you a different view than I gave you last time. And unfortunately, by doing that, I left out some information that you're asking for. But I will be happy to get that for you.
Thank you.
So state numbers on the. So I'm gonna look back to ELI for a second. Again, we talked about that we have some areas where our students are achieving, over seventy percent of our students are achieving proficiency, some, lots of sixties. And then some areas where, so they're all over the fifty percent mark.
So on the far left.
And one of the things that I'm gonna give you, I'm sorry, Al, one of the things that I, I will also put together for you, it occurs to me that where I can compare the cohorts here with the cohorts that I had for the NWEA, that would be interesting to see together. Al, did you have a question before I do?
Just far left top. So grade three, grade four, grade five, grade six, year to year, number of students. What is three plus again? I'm sorry.
Proficient and above. So level three is proficient.
Is it the colors, the same?
Yes. It's, it's similar to.
It's the blue and the greens.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, here it's blue and green.
Gotcha.
It is interesting to see the numbers. In, in some of those cohorts, the numbers change quite a bit and in other places they don't. So here's math. And this, I think it'll also be interesting if it's, if I put it beside the NWEA for you because we're seeing the same kind of pattern of the numbers dropping.
And it does, you know, Amy, what you talked about before, that the math numbers do seem to be lower overall than the reading or the language arts.
Right, so I think that the teacher leader emphasis on making sure that we are all using, you know, a similar, similar base as we're going forward at grade level.
I have a question.
Have we determined that though? Is the issue with the dropping scores, the inconsistency in terms of presentation, I guess?
It is not necessarily the only issue. And, you know, just as we, in the very lowest grades, try to make sure we're building on a foundation, that if we're not building on a foundation that's leading from one to the next, that's gonna make it more difficult for the students to understand the concepts and do better.
Did we just get rid of the student, the teacher leaders in sixth and seventh?
No, we just have a whole new group of teacher leaders.
Our budget, we didn't get rid of two positions?
No, not teacher leaders.
No, it wasn't determined what grade.
Oh, did we?
It wasn't, it was a proposal from administration to reduce that by two.
I missed it, I misspoke.
But I would think there'd be a look across, I, I don't have specific what, what grade.
My guess would be middle school because then we're gonna use those teachers to fill in blanks for the English department, if I remember, remember? So that's something to be a little concerned about right now. If we take away those leader positions.
That, no, that was not my understanding of how those positions, those positions were going to, where teachers were doing.
There wasn't a specific grade, it wasn't.
Were doing study halls.
I mean, you know, and Amy, I don't mean to take, take time from you, but I was in a meeting. I mean, you know, and Amy, I don't mean to take take time from you, but I was in a meeting on Monday with the teacher leaders in the Professional Development Committee. And I was amazed by the quality of professional we have in that group, absolutely. It was a great experience, a very well-run meeting, and I think that's something we need to reevaluate because it's an excellent team. And I'm sure that Meredith has looked at it, she's just not here to discuss what the process is, and none of us remember what it is. So I think we'll talk about that as a future, but we have excellent teachers overall, but I was particularly impressed with the teacher leaders that I met on Monday. So, Amy, go ahead, Mel, I've got one.
Okay, and this is another instance, actually, where the teacher leader position has 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 and will be very important to us. So what you're looking at here is the old kneecap science assessment, and that was based on the New Hampshire Science Standards. The new assessment is based on the Next Generation Science Standards. And the Next Generation Science Standards are much more than just standards, it's also a way of teaching. And what, one thing that we have definitely accomplished, and and you can see the growth, especially in the higher grades, from the kneecap science to the state assessment, is that it is based on the Next Gen standards and our science teachers have definitely moved towards the Next Generation standards. However, they have not had an opportunity to have a full training on how that teaching happens. And I met with Allison Boudreau, and I'm going to be observing her teaching with those methods. And I think we're very fortunate to have someone who's so well-trained in those methods that can pass it along to the rest of our staff. And she is our junior senior science teacher leader.
One of the things that Elizabeth and I were just looking at is the the lack of proficiency on the on the Next Gen on the end, the larger numbers in the red. Is that a need to modify the program for special ed students? Or do we, I mean, I, it just seems like those numbers got so big. And maybe it's just a different type of assessment and that's what it is, but.
This was the first year that we did this assessment. And I don't know precisely where we are at each grade level with implementing the Next Gen standards. I know that everybody has had a chance to look at them and is moving their curriculum in that direction. And.
But they may not be all there yet.
Right.
Okay. So that does make, again, that makes it tough.
Yeah, and you can see, even here, the fourth grade was more highly proficient than these grades. So it's, we definitely need to make sure that our instruction matches expectations. I showed you these SAT results in the spring. And I I wanted to put them back up because I wanna share with you a new program that the College Board has come up with to help all students who take the SAT and leading up to taking the SAT will help them have better scores. It's called the SA SAT Suite of Assessments. And I'm gonna scroll back for a second. As I said, I wanted to come back to the PSAT eight-nine and the PSAT ten NMSQT. And those are the assessments that lead up to the SAT. And the new Suite of Assessments program that the College Board has developed has a component in it that gives students the opportunity to go into Khan Academy. Their scores are tracked, and the Khan Academy is set up to give them practice on their areas of weakness. So that if they are not doing the, getting to the level that's expected, these are the new levels that are expected on those lower tests prior to the SAT. And if they don't attain those levels, they're able to go into Khan Academy and set up their own program and strengthen those areas.
And they would do that during a study hall or at home, assuming?
E- either way, right. This is brand new, we we have not got it fully in place. The students did just take, and I'll show you in a second, their scores. They did just take the PSAT NMSQT. That's given in tenth grade, and all of those letters have to do with national merit scholars.
Right.
So that they can track, you know, where they could be and what things they might need to work on to attain that.
So the self-motivated, self-driven kids would do it.
And, you know, once we have a chance to meet with all of the teachers and talk to them about this is a a great opportunity, if they do have study hall time, that they could go on to this.
Can we back up, can we back up a minute to the SAT? So New Market, proficient with distinction is six percent. Proficient is forty-seven, oh, we've got total proficient, what does that mean?
The total proficient is the green and the blue together. It's the proficient and proficient with distinction is what they call it.
But we have no blue in New Market.
We do.
Yeah. No, 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 a bright blue, whatever that color.
These are right here. This is a total of this number and this number. That's what this is.
The overall district and the New Market numbers are the same?
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you, okay.
And Amy, if you look at this again, the math is this weaker area by a long shot.
Do we still have that, the gentleman that comes to the?
Mahasharma.
Yes.
We do not, and that was one of the things that the teacher leaders brought up, is that we don't necessarily need to specifically have him, but we need to go back and look at tho- that information. What are what are the parts of that that we wanna make sure is still being used?
Yeah.
And what are areas, where are areas of weakness? And that's, you know, we can, we can pull that up with the data that we have. And one of the things that's another huge benefit of going to the SAT Suite of Assessments is that we did not previously, I tried, to compare the ACT information with the SAT information. And I had these two huge binders, and I was trying to figure out a way to get them to mesh, and I could not. Not only will we be able to mesh the information, but they're going to do it for us and help the students by giving them the opportunity to use Khan Academy to strengthen those skills in those upper grades.
I would think, you know, with the practice in ninth grade and tenth grade, whereas you're going from the ACT to an SAT out of nowhere
Right.
for students who don't take a course or don't do anything else.
Yes.
There should be some sort of potential increase.
Absolutely, yeah, it will be, and nice to see once we can have this fully entrenched that, see those scores go up.
What was Pat Valentine's title again, her last title?
Director.
Curriculum.
Curriculum director, director.
Curriculum and instruction?
And we don't have that anymore.
Right.
We get rid of that position.
And I I wanna comment on what you were saying, Kim, about the, that meeting we had, I was, I was also in that meeting. And I think one of the things that is so important about that is that with the teacher leader positions being broken down by area, they are looking at what is the, what are the specific areas of professional development that we really need to enhance these things? And that with the Professional Development Committee meeting together, we can plan a much more solid base.
That was the hope, and that was the whole thing that got me excited about the teacher leaders, and that's what, I love hearing that that's what you're doing.
There's a type of passion in that.
I am, but these numbers are concerning. It's not where we wanna be.
I'm going backwards again, I apologize. I'm not used to using the little scroll button to move my screen, but. Okay, so these are the tenth grade numbers, and I'm leaving my microphone behind. So this number shows the percentage of students that met the target in both areas of math and ELA.
Which is fifty-nine percent.
The English and reading, English reading and writing on the, this test is seventy-nine percent. And the math is the fifty-nine percent. And that's what gives you that fifty-nine percent for both.
Well, our English is obviously strong, you can see that through all the test scores. The math is what's concerning.
However.
Actually, it seems to be indicative of the state as well.
Yeah, that that was my point, I mean, I looked at the district and then at the state, and we're leading the state in every case. I don't know, I don't know what that means, I don't know whether that means state.
Let me show you.
If the whole doesn't provide.
Right.
The number just seems, it seems like when you're in the fifty percent proficiency, that's a, that's a lot of mish- mishaps.
And what does total group mean? What's, what's it totaling?
That's the total number of of students that have taken that test.
All the people in the state who have taken.
Almost two million. No, this, this is, I, this is the, yeah, this is national. So let's get a little closer to home. These are the same schools that I showed you last time with a three-year view. I think it's interesting that the the New Market, Barrington, and Upping all had the strongest year this past year. And to your point, Al, I just wanted to point this out by, when I said look a little closer to home, this is the state. Look at where everybody else is. I mean, these individual students, I mean, excuse me, individual districts. So I'm always cautious when we compare to the state because, yes, we did better than the state, we sure did. And we also need to compare ourselves to, you know, the folks that are closer to our situation.
Yeah, this doesn't surprise me at all because there may be some very remote regions of the state
Exactly.
which just don't have the resources.
Exactly. So that's ELA. And here's math.
This shows everybody beating us in math except for Farmington.
Well, this past year, we we you can see that our our numbers were higher this past year, which put us above schools that we had previously been behind. So we're making some headway.
Well, Amy, you've given us a considerable amount of food for thought, so I appreciate that. Are there any questions about this? And like I said, I will get with you to sort of dig a little more deeply into these areas at a future meeting. Any questions, anyone? Amy, thank you.
Thank you very much for the time.
All right, we will move into the Special Business Meeting. The first item on that agenda is the default budget, and Lisa, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Take one of each as a summary of default detail, and then a much more detailed report in the back for your budget book. That's really what it's for. It's a multi-page.
Is it three documents, Lisa?
Yep, so there's like a twenty-page thing towards the end. So you should have a summary sheet, the default, and then a detailed. I didn't recall it. Detailed. So I know there's been a lot of discussion on the default budget and what needs to be done differently. The form is still the same form that we've always had with the revenue. So a lot of it is the same. Specifically, the amendment had to do with clarifying when a position is eliminated. Some districts eliminate the position, leave it in the default, and some are play conservative, I guess is what to say. They eliminate the position and they take it out of their default, so.
So basically, if you, we let a teacher go,
Yeah.
you would leave it in the default budget?
If, well, perhaps in the past, we might have.
But now we're not.
But now the law says, it clarified that an eliminated position does not include something that is vacant under recruitment. So if you're, if you have a vacant position, you can leave it in the default, you haven't filled that position yet. But if you truly eliminate it, it needs to come out. If you redefine a position, so if you had a kindergarten position is cut, but a new first grade position is added, you can leave that in your default. So we redefine some things, and you'll see some pluses and minuses. We removed the assistant superintendent and redefined our teacher leaders and our administrative assistant principals. So I was able to realign that budget. The other thing, there was clarification in the law having to do with salary increases. So new money cannot be put in, and it never could, but it was just more clarification. But you'll see that the administrative raises were in one line. I realigned them into, because people are currently making that. So that is what a person currently makes in their budget, so that was realigned, that's all. It was in the budget, so we can keep it in the budget. No new money can go in to the default, though. So the other, the other thing is, the clarification is that we have to present it and discuss it if need be. We, the Budget Committee, it's it's your number, it's the governing body's number to give to the Budget Committee, but it can be open at the public. You can have a discussion on it if people wish to. The way I've, I've always done it, I haven't really done it any different, I've always provided the details and had the details. But I present this high-level chart, that's all that really needs to be presented. So the major differences, if you look at the summary, or actually, it's hard to do it at a high level, but if you look at the summary chart, there's certain things that, oh, and then the, I'm sorry, I should've just said, and then the other major clarification had to do with contracts. So if a contract wasn't.
Single page.
Yep, yep, so if a contract wasn't voted in, you can't put that difference, like our bus contract.
Yeah.
Take a step back, another way to say it, so for collective bargaining, you say, I have this contract, it's gonna last three years. And you show what the three-year outcome is, and you put it down on the line. So you can, you can add the difference for collective bargaining into your default. But when we do a bus contract and we don't say what the three-year outcome is, or we don't have it voted on separately, what they call sambronize it, if you don't put it out there for the three years or four years, whatever the contract is, you cannot put it into your default. So that was the big risk to some of these things, that if we had a contract that was multi-year, we can't put the increase in.
Fuel, like your fuel contract, your bus contract.
Fuel, electricity, even if we expect electricity, like right now, we could be renegotiating a rate on electricity. Even if we expect electricity, like right now, we could be renegotiating a rate on electricity enter into a contract, and I know that that contract would go up, I can't put it into my default no longer. So basically, made some things easy. It's just what it was last year is what we have to live with, and it's...
It makes it easier, but it's confusing, I think, to just all of, let's speak for Newmarket, where we've had people who voted on it.
For instance, it looks like the default budget is $230,000 roughly.
So it's $236,141 lower than what you proposed for your fiscal year '20. The major drivers are that for some positions, such as the social worker position, that was never voted in, it was put into the budget, that cannot be in the default. So where fiscal year '20 has a social worker, fiscal year '20 has a SRO, that, that cannot, because that was a, that was not voted in into the budget, it can't go into your default. Until it's in there once, now you have it.
Right.
But you can't have the increases go in there.
Because those went in in the middle of the year as opposed to the beginning of the budget cycle.
Yeah.
And I think those are the words that are so important for people to understand. Because we did, we had meetings, we had public meetings on the SRO, so people had a chance to have an input, but now...
But it wasn't voted in into the budget of last year, so until it gets in there. So fiscal year '20, we put it in, if, you know, I, I stay positive, in March, when it gets approved, then it's in.
But Lisa, if it doesn't get approved, and we have, we have to have a...
Then you still want to keep it.
We have to have a bus contract, we have to have oil, we have to have electricity. Where will that money come from?
We have to, if we keep in mind that we're voting on a total, bottom-line total, we have to realign it. I'd come to you with transfers and say, what are we not going to do?
It's gonna, we're gonna get rid of people and programs.
Well, perhaps, because 80 percent of the budget is that.
Right.
And the bond has to remain.
Yep.
So the only thing in the default is, if the interest decreases, the principal went up, we adjust for that in the default. We have to cover our bond. Um, any, any changes that I know that went away, um, our portables went away, what we had the last year. I can't keep that in the default because I know it's done. So I removed the portables, but if you remember, we took that money and said, we're gonna take care of that roof.
Yeah.
I cannot put that as an increase in the default. That is a redefining of the budget, but not people.
Right.
So you can redefine your, um, employees, but I can't redefine, um, the discretionary stuff.
We have, the, the, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna be voting on the, or the citizens will be voting on the teacher's contract.
Yeah.
They'll be voting on the default budget. And they'll be voting on the proposed...
Separate, separate warrant articles.
Yeah. So, the default budget is gonna vary greatly if the teacher's contract is not approved. Is that correct?
No, the default budget is in the warrant article with the operating budget. If the teacher's contract is not approved, then it just remains what teachers make right now. Their, their salaries are frozen.
And that, that contract will be voted on, will have been voted on by the voters, and so it can be included in future, future budgets.
And each year, each year of the three-year contract will not get...
Can, it, when, when the teacher's contract gets approved, that will go for the next year into the default, and then for the future years.
Right.
Because we said, we, we laid it out, here's a contract of multi-years, so we can include the collective bargaining in the default.
Right. But all of those years, those anniversary years when we have to renegotiate a contract, since that is on the ballot at the same time that the budget is...
And it will always, yeah.
It will always be a little... Disynchronous.
This is the first year.
So the major items in the default are fuel?
So the differences, significant differences have to do with, oh, and special ed, we, we can, um, by law, we need to, um, we can put those items into the default, so, um, those services, however you might view them as contracted services, they're IEP-driven, we need to put them in, so you see an increase in the default from the prior year for special ed. So if you look at the last column of the summary chart, um, regular ed is, is, is pretty, well, it's, it's down, but that has to do with realigning, um, some positions. But 1,200 is up, and that mostly is the contracts. 1,400 is, um, a change in the insurance rates, too. So as people were changing their medical insurances, teachers, I can adjust for their, their, um, their changes. And a lot of that is, I have to, because it's part of the offset for the warrant article, if you recall. So I have to have the correct health insurance numbers in for the teachers to make that work, so any, any changes. So that's what was happening under 1,400. And just going through, if you recall, we had increases for, um, coaches and all, those, those are not in the default.
Yep.
So there's a decrease in all the other 1,400s for that. Um, you see that 2113, the social worker, is down because that position cannot be in, into the default. If you look further down, the 2190 is, is not in there. That's where the SRO is, is kept. Technology, another significant thing, is having not put in technology into last year's budget, hoping to use the capital reserve, we don't have that in our default. We don't have that in our defaults because we can't, we can't put new, we can't put new numbers in. So, but the good news is, if we don't need to use the default, I mean, the capital reserve this year, we'll still have it for next year if we were in a default position.
So when I first started on this, the board, six long years ago, we had all those trust funds.
Yes, yeah.
I'm wondering, do we need to start putting money back into those again for the, for these things, like special ed? We all know it takes one student and wipe out our whole program.
Well, that's what we have talked about, um, in past budget meetings, you know, when, when is the right time, too? So this year, with, um, the warrant article, the teach, might not be the right time to add to it. Um, but also, I can tell you, the reserve that is set up for special ed, yes, to your point, it will cover one.
Wipe us out. So these are all things that we, as a board, have to make sure that gets out. We, um, the budget meeting meets again, we're gonna talk about the, the default budget.
Yeah.
I think it's so important that people walk away understanding what this means.
Now, when you mentioned capital reserves, it did come up, and you know, you were there, the, um, budget committee asked about some housekeeping warrants, so that's an idea, do we close out some of those smaller ones? But then, there's a school of thought, how many warrants, how many articles do you want people voting on? So you have to think of the timing of those things.
Oh my God, we had, what was the one year? We had like 10.
Because it's not just the school warrants, it's the town warrants, how many, we have a couple extra warrants on the town.
It gets overwhelming.
So...
No, but it's, those are things that we need to think of.
Yeah.
This is talking three years again down the road. There were reasons why things were done, and now we're beginning to see why they were done. You know, CIP is a great thing, because we can actually put money away towards our future. That's what those trust funds were for. That one student in special ed that can wipe out your whole program. We need to, we need to start thinking about building those up again.
And we have to ensure people, you know, get, take care of what they budgeted for this year, that we have what we need and going into next. That's the risk you have. Um, 2,600, we have the buildings and grounds, for example, where we'll be short the money that we're putting in for the roof, 60, $68,000 less. And then the transportation, all the increases there, um, the 20,000. Not only, um, not only regular transportation, special ed transportation, I, I, I would say that I would need a legal finding to know whether I can put that.
I was gonna ask about that.
It's not true, I don't, yeah.
If there's an, an IEP that says that Jane has to be picked up at her school...
It's law-driven.
I might, I might ask, um, an attorney, I...
I mean, at her house, excuse me.
And I honestly didn't think of it till this moment, um, special ed transportation, I might be able to add that back in.
Elizabeth, to your point, and, and we'll talk about this in a minute, I think the whole thing about this is the education process. The education of the facts and helping people understand it, you know, the fact that if there is a $236,000 deficit, there're going to be implications in other areas to make up that difference. We only can spend what we are bud, we have in our budget to spend. It is a bottom-line number, and we'll have to do some shaking around, but it's, it's a considerable amount of money.
I mean, we've always had a default budget on the warrant article, and they've been higher, lower, whatever. And they still, and they still can be higher or lower. The difference is now, we have to open it up for questions and discussions and talk about it. And so that's perhaps a good thing, if we talk about it, people know what's in jeopardy if we go into a default.
And this is legislatively directed, so all schools across the whole state are facing this whole issue of trying to explain how the default budget this year is not looking the way the default budget last year looked.
It's a wolf in sheep's clothing, is what it is. It's a wolf in sheep's clothing. That's what it is. If you really want to be honest.
But it's the whole state. It's not, it's not just us. It's not just Newmarket, it's Exeter, it's Durham, it's Portsmouth, everybody.
But just having, um, talked to a lot of my peers and being in a room with a number of business administrators, when we do the default, it's, yes, how do you do it? How do you do it? It's try to bring some standardization to it. Um, because if you, and the major thing was, if you eliminate a position, some places keep it in, some take it out. So now, definitely has to be out.
So, um, this goes to communication, I suppose, too. So, $231,207 is allocated for three things of, of the difference. It's the, it's, it's the social worker position, it's the SRO, and the roof. So, I mean, I think when we're communicating these things, like, you know, if we don't have approval of our proposed budget, it's gonna be difficult and maybe non-feasible next year to have those critical things that we all talked about. And, you know, so, I mean...
But let me say one thing, too, and just to be clear, it doesn't need to be those things, because you, as a board, you will have a bottom-line total, and we'll come back to you and say, okay, now you have to reprioritize.
People and programs. That's what needs to be cleared.
Where will the money come to keep those things that, those dollars weren't there for?
I, that's, that's a fair point. I understand that, but, you know, we also, um, and this is one thing I would communicate to folks, we also spend a month or two months going over the budget and, you know, with, with sharp pencils and whittling it down. So, you know, yeah, we didn't leave much in the first place to, to work with. I mean, if, if you have to work with it, you have to work with it, but I would say, we all took a hard look at it and narrowed it down as, as frugally as we reasonably thought we could, you know? So, um, I, my sort of take on the whole thing is, wouldn't be, oh, well, we got plenty of room to go here if the default budget. No, we're in, we're in, we're in, um, in a tough area.
That might have been the mindset of those who put the legislature together, that, oh, you can find the money, but that isn't...
And it will, yeah, as if, as if it was overfunded to begin with, in, given the past 10 years. But, um, so, I guess it sort of goes to the communication piece. I mean, those, those are three things that we, uh, two of them, that the social worker and the, um, um, SRO that we, we had public meetings on in particular. And, and of course, the roof makes good sense, because we've, we have a, um, it's, you know, it's, it's really part of, uh, almost a CIP plan. We planned it out, we've had a roof survey, um, we've, uh, we have a schedule of replacement with any, which any good building maintenance program ought to have, so, uh, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, but those, those are things that, um, you know, if we're trying to boil it down, we're gonna, most likely, you know, those things may not happen.
Yeah, we're gonna need talking points, we're gonna need to be consistent.
Um, Mike, have you had a chance, because I know we talked the last one, I, we haven't had much time since the last meeting, but have you had a chance to, to review anything with that yet?
In terms of...
The, the talking, the document that we sort of had as a baseline?
I haven't had a chance, Kim.
I wasn't sure if I hadn't seen the email.
I haven't had a chance.
Okay, well, we'll get to it. We'll get to it.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's good to have a number in mind and the driver, so it's a good place. I think now probably is a better time to even start it, so that's good. Um, any other thoughts about the communication piece?
Thank you for the presentation.
And so with that in mind, this will be the number presented to the budget committee for a public hearing.
Yeah.
And, um, is that January?
January 7th.
7th. And I will, I will reach out with your permission to find out about that, um, transportation.
Please do, because I think that's a valid point.
Yep.
If, if there, if there's an E, an IEP driver to that, I think that we should investigate it, so you absolutely have my permission to do that.
Okay.
Unless the board has some objection to it.
No, and I think, I think somebody must have the answer, because it's gonna come up in every...
Oh, yes, I know exactly who to call.
No, 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 I mean, other school boards must be asking that very same question.
And I can, I can initially ask my peers to, you know, my safety.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, I spoke regarding the superintendent search, I spoke with Art Bettencourt on Tuesday. Um, he called me, because the contract has been signed by me and by Nezdek. Um, he will be here on the 3rd at 6:00 PM, so the meeting will be at 6:00 instead of 7:00. We'll start at 6:00 instead of 7:00 that night for us to map out. He will be here and very possibly Carolyn, it will either be both of them or just Art, but, um, we'll be here at 6 o'clock on the 3rd. Um, and then we'll get that moving. Elizabeth had spoken to me about people, the community members who had reached out, um, to possibly serve on the search committee. There are some people that have done that, and I'm keeping them in a file, so when we get to that point, I will share those with the board, too.
I think we should put it out there right now. Like, let's get this, we can hit it running.
Right, but I, absolutely. Anyone interested, let us know. Um, you know, it might be easier when we have a timeline, we can say, this is the sort of expectation that we have, but if anyone's interested, reach out.
Like, that way we can, we can go boom, 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 call, are you interested? Get on it. Let's do this.
We will.
I feel like we're a month or so behind.
We probably are, but that's okay, we'll get it. Um, finally, shared services, a brief update on that. Dale, Meredith and I met on Tuesday, Tuesday, I think, yes, Tuesday. Uh, to just sort of update each other on where things are with shared services and sort of figure out a plan for, um, moving forward. Um, you know, with Meredith being removed from the situation, just determining what, what the best way to handle that is and make sure that everything works out, and we can continue to be successful with shared services. So, I will have further updates, future, but there was a meeting on, on Tuesday. Any questions about anything else? Anything that we have not covered?
I wanted to, um, sorry, go backwards, just give the revenue impact for that, um, the changes.
We can certainly do that.
Well, it would be, um, 31 cents less.
Okay. Did it fall over the other one?
Yeah.
But again, $31, 31 cents less, with the impact being peoples and pro, people and programs.
Yeah.
So Lisa, do you know how on the warrant articles, these will appear in terms of, um, school board approval and, um, budget committee approval?
Not yet, they have, oh, sorry.
Will the default budget not have that? I mean, we...
No, it, it does have that.
The, the, um, uh, budget committee will vote on the default budget as well?
It's the overall warrant.
Okay.
So, um, if you don't want to approve the default piece, it's part of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's, there isn't like two tallies, it's one tally for the warrant that says, this is, this is the amount. If defeated, this is the amount and the impact, so...
All right. Any other questions? As I said, the next meeting for us will be January 3rd at 6:00 instead of 7:00, so we can start with superintendent search. And then on January 7th, Elizabeth, if I'm correct, is the public hearing for the budget.
Yeah.
So mark that on your calendars, too, that's Monday. Hearing nothing else, I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Approve the manifest?
Uh, yes, thanks.
I forgot about the manifest now, thank you.
Like, make a motion to approve the two manifests, uh, I'm sorry.
Several of them.
We didn't have one at the last meeting.
We've got payroll, hold on just a second. So we got two payroll manifests of 12, 14, 18. That's what it says.
That sounds right. I, I'd have to look at the sheet. I know there was more than one.
Okay.
I don't remember that.
I'm just surprised they're on the same, the payroll date is the same payroll date. I think it's incorrect here. I think that should be 12, 21. Tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna, uh, seek a motion to approve the total of all manifests of
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from, we have a motion from Mr. Zink for the second from Ms. McKenney to approve the manifest as listed. Uh, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the manifest, say aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Um, any other thing else that I'm forgetting? Thank you for your hard work this year. I appreciate it immensely. Looking forward to great things in 2019. Thank you for your hard work this year. I appreciate it immensely. Looking forward to great things in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you for your dedication to the students. Seeking a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight oh nine P M.
So.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Zink and a second for Ms. McKenney to adjourn the meeting, meeting at eight oh nine. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.